Could you tell us who you are and where you live?
Thanks, Phil. Uh, Kelly Jane Klow, Mitchell Road. Last year, we had a photography show at the Ipswich Visitor Center called "Of Ipswich, By Ipswich," and it was all amateur photographers and pictures of Ipswich, and it was a huge success. So this year, we've added Ipswich in the Eyes of a Child, and it's all children's photography. Um, we don't, at present, we only have four children signed up, so if your parents have children that like to take pictures or have taken pictures, um, please feel free to email me at Mrs.KLOUB@Yahoo.com, and I'll send you the information. Right now, we have thirty-five people signed up to exhibit their photography that they've taken throughout Ipswich through the year. So we, um, it's December fifth, sixth, and seventh, and the opening reception is Friday night with hot cider and home baked goodies.
And that will be at?
The Ipswich Visitor Center.
And is the M in M-R-S-K sensitive?
Nope.
So just good old M-R-S-K-L-O-U-B?
Yep, that's it, at Yahoo.com, and I'll forward all the information that you need for it.
Okay, and everybody is, is, this is an honor system, so if a beautiful picture is presented and the presumed photographer is a child, we believe that.
I will, what the heck.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Uh, something that had occurred to me to do a while ago, and I haven't followed up on it, and the last couple of times I've gone down Market Street, I have been watching, uh, it used to be the, um, the business store that was there, uh, sort of emerged as something else, a men's haberdashery store, and since there seems to be no other similar competition in town, uh, I thought it might be a good idea to welcome, uh, Peter Mark Murphy, who's here tonight. He is the owner of Peter's, Peter Mark's Closet. Do you have a minute? Would you tell us a little bit about who you are and what goes on down there?
So my name is Peter Murphy, and I live over on River Point Drive, and, uh, I grew up with the house up here in Gloucester and became very familiar with Ipswich, going to River View Pizza and Chipper's, and always thought that this would be a great spot for a business. So when the business, uh, the office store came available, I had a store in Newburyport for ten years, I've been in men's clothing for about thirty years. Uh, I decided to partner up with a friend of mine, Ben McPhail, who owns a little bit of Naples in, uh, Newburyport and Portsmouth, and bring men's resale to Ipswich, because there was no other spot in Ipswich quite like what Ben was doing, and he's been doing it very successfully. And, uh, we've had a great reception here in Ipswich, we've got a tremendous selection of men's pre-owned clothing, we're gonna bring a little bit of new clothing in as well. Uh, but it's really been, it's been wonderful. Uh, we had our grand opening on Friday, or Saturday, rather, with the, kind of the bad weather, but we had a few people turn out, we had Orville Giddings playing, uh, we did a little bit of Turner, uh, Turkey Shore Distillery rum, which was nice, and, uh, it's been, it's been a really pleasant experience, so, you know, anybody that's downtown, stop in, say hello. Um, we're gonna be open seven days a week, we're gonna really try to push being open on Sunday, uh, we're gonna do a couple of nights going into the holiday, so we're really gonna try to, uh, see if we can do a seven-day-a-week business. I know downtown is kinda tough, uh, sometimes on Sundays, and a lot of places are closed on Monday, but we're gonna try and do seven days a week and see if we can make it work.
Well, welcome to Ipswich, and, uh, I've sort of gazed through the window and at one, actually twice walked through it, and we will all look a lot better if we purchase some of these clothes, they are, uh, a better, a better quality clothing than I'm used to, so, uh, I wish you all the, all the success, thank you, thank you very much for being here. Peter Mark's Closet, and that is twenty-five Market Street, thank you very much, we wish you success. Any other citizen inquiries?
Sir. Gary Champion. Three Palomino Way, I've been in Peter's store, it is beautifully laid out, a lot of selections, good products, I'll be back.
We will expect to see you at future meetings, really well turned out, okay.
Very quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, a town meeting approved the Winthrop feasibility study because the school building committee had done a great job, and I see that in tonight's agenda includes the Board of Selectmen appointing a school building committee member. And at town meeting, there's also discussion on Winthrop, um, the town discussion included inquiries about the future of Doian School and the potential benefits combining both elementary schools. The school building committee website states that the MSBA, which is the Mass School Building Authority, did note that Ipswich has, was free to quote, "look at both schools" in the feasibility study. And the school building committee website also quotes that therefore is open to study any reasonable physically responsible option offered by the project team that would solve Ipswich's elementary school needs. A comprehensive, long-range elementary school plan requires full consideration of this option which is available to town, that being combining both schools. Winthrop is, for example, on eight acres, shared with the fire department in a high-congested traffic area, and this could be a prime spot for the combined public safety building. Um, Doian is on eighteen acres in a low congestion area, just two miles from Winthrop, and the school building committee is considering transferring students from Doian to Winthrop, so it's already in play. So, it would remain, it could remain both Winthrop and Doian schools, they could be separate, separate bus schedules, uh, on the same land, just like combining middle school and the high school, which was a great success. So I'm here to ask tonight that the Board of Selectmen ensure Ipswich residents that a comprehensive, non-biased study of this option is done. Thank you.
Okay, so your question is, will we ensure that a comprehensive, non-unbiased study will be done?
Of combining both schools, correct, whether it's right or wrong?
Uh, as I understand it, uh, the feasibility study can, uh, go in a number of directions based on where the evidence leads, uh, Mr. Metoffian?
The, so, as you know, with town meeting, we passed, um, the, um, article for the nine-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars, and now the process is, is to hire the OPM to get everything started. Once we've hired them, it's really their job and the MSBAs to, to come up with the best possible educational plan that, that they see during all the studies that they're gonna do. So, it could be anything, Gary, we, we, we have no, we have no direction that we're putting them in, we're just saying, come up with the best option possible for what they're gonna do, whether it's, whether it's at Winthrop, whether it's Doian, whether, we don't know, we don't know if it's gonna be one building, two buildings, we have no idea what it's gonna be, because this is why they, these people being hired is to come in, they're gonna ultimately come back and say, this is our recommendation on what should go forward, and then ultimately, the school committee, um, because it's their buildings, will come back and say, yeah, we agree or don't agree, but, yeah, it's an unbiased, we're not giving them any direction, it's, we've just said this is what we're paying.
We're Winthrop's, as I understand, thank you, for that explanation, the town does own that land where Winthrop is, Doian owns the town, it's, if you go to the town website and you look at property, um, but, just sometimes people sort of head in one direction, don't realize there's another road that should be looked at, that's all I'm asking for, is that they're given serious consideration.
All the roads are open.
Having been a part of this discussion since, uh, the original submission, uh, School Building Assistance, I can assure you there was no, uh, preordained solution at this point. I think proposals were presented, I think in looking at the two schools, I felt that Winthrop was probably the most deserving at this time, but as was pointed out by, uh, Nishan, there has been nothing eliminated, and if, when all the facts are gathered, it makes more sense to have a combined large elementary school, I'm sure that's what the School Building Assistance crowd will be most in favor of. It is their job to make sure they don't waste state money, and depending on the results of the study, it could go that way, on the other hand, there is no guarantee.
Very good, Paul, I'll be at those meetings, and thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. Other citizen inquiries? Okay, hearing done. We've been asked to accept a four-thousand-dollar gift from First Ipswich Bank in support of First Ipswich's First-dash-dash-period. This event is a homage to harvest, hearth, and home in the Thanksgiving season, the donation will be deposited into gift account C45, which has been established for this annual event. Members of the board are invited to gather with Ipswich's First-dot-dot-dot-period, partners to accept a symbolic giant check at a staged promo op, this date and time has yet to be announced, and as I understand it, it's only gonna happen on Friday?
That's what I heard.
Is there a time? Ten AM in the morning, so if there are members or those that could represent the board, I will not be in town, so I'm unable.
Nishan and I will be in Boston at the MSBA.
Okay. Uh, Judy?
I can be there.
Okay, you will be our official representative with the large check. Okay, are we, uh, generally when donations have been given to the town, we formally accept within all of the legal and appropriate provisions, is that appropriate at this time?
Sure.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
To accept a gift from First Ipswich Bank with gratitude, and, uh, I think we can be assured that it will be given the appropriate stewardship, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you very much. Called attention to this once before, but would like to do it again. On Tuesday, November eleventh, twenty forty, twenty fourteen, it is the intent of all four Ipswich veterans organizations to conduct a Veterans Day parade and honor ceremonies at the memorial and the VFW flagpole memorial. We will assemble at the town war memorial no later than ten-thirty AM on the morning of November eleventh, and then at the conclusion of ceremonies, march from there to the VFW headquarters located at the Ipswich YMCA for the final ceremony where closing remarks will be made. It is requested that a parade permit be approved by the Board of Selectmen for this event, all members of the Board of Selectmen, police, and fire departments are cordially invited to attend and/or participate with your, our veterans. Refreshments will be served at the VFW hall immediately after the event. As it has been during the past Veterans Day and Memorial Day celebrations, it is also requested that appropriate traffic flow be directed by the police department and a fire truck be available for the eleven, and that's number eleven blasts of the horn, at eleven AM sharp, and if you do the math, it is the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month. The American Legion Commander James Graffham will coordinate with both the police and fire departments, thank you, and this has been reviewed and approved by the chief, is there a motion to issue the permit?
Moved.
Second. Been moved in second, and any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ipswich, mark your calendar, November eleventh, starting at or about ten-thirty AM. Board and committee appointments, miscellaneous items, can ask to, uh, approve an appointment to the Elementary School Feasibility Study Committee of Steve Solomon. Is Mr. Solomon here? Would you like to come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself? You can either do it there, or you can come up and sit down, depending on, depending on how you're feeling.
So my name is, uh, Stephen Solomon, uh, my wife and I moved to town at the end of August, um, and in checking out the town website, I saw the, um, posting for residents that have architecture, engineering, and construction experience, um, I'm a professional mechanical engineer at a architecture engineering firm in Cambridge, um, a lot of experience designing schools K through twelve, along with other, um, different building types, so I thought it'd be a great opportunity to get involved with the town and, uh, try to share my knowledge and help the town.
First of all, I wanna thank you for stepping for, and, uh, stepping forward and volunteering, and, uh, second, uh, did you have any trouble finding that information on the town website as a newcomer? You went right to the website and discovered a volunteer opportunity?
Yeah, it was, uh, it was on the, the, the first page, I was looking, I can't remember for what, but, um, yeah, it was very easy to find.
Okay.
Mr. Solomon, yeah, Mr. Solomon was one of the original applicants, but he hadn't yet moved to Ipswich, so we deferred his appointment till he was located here.
So now that you're a taxpayer, welcome to Ipswich.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
You been keeping up with, watching some of the meetings, kind of the, what we've been doing so far?
I attended the, I attended the town meeting, um, and, you know, heard the presentation and everything, uh, so, um, I'm looking to, you know, hopefully get up to speed on some of the more of the details, but, uh, yeah, I was at the town meeting.
Good, look forward to having you.
Other questions? As I recall from the, uh, previous discussion, your background is, uh, most appropriate to the committee, and again, we thank you for stepping forward, is there a, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to appoint Steve Solomon to the Elementary School Feasibility Study Committee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, and I'm pleased that you found it on the website, thank you. Confirmation of appointment to the Conservation Commission. You're confirming an appointment?
Yes, um, we have an associate member's position available, and Raymond Putnam, is he here? There he is, uh, who has, um, experience in, um, uh, engineering and the environment, um, has applied, and this requires your approval.
Okay, tell us a little bit about yourself, how you found out about the opportunity to serve, and, uh, what do you think the Conservation, uh, Commission should and can do for the town?
Sure, my name's Ray Putnam, Town Farm Road, I've lived in Ipswich about six years. Um, I'm an environmental scientist at the US EPA right now, and I've, uh, met Alicia and Jennifer through some trainings, have attended some of the Conservation Commission meetings, I know it's a really busy commission here in town, uh, there's a lot of activity, and, you know, I, I feel it's a good place to give something back, get involved with the town, I do have some of the technical skills, and, uh, I don't know what else, it's about it.
Okay, well, uh, the Conservation Commission has a long and noble tradition, uh, we have, uh, because of our estuaries and wetland areas and concern for, uh, our clam flats and the overall look and feel of the great salt marsh, uh, we take the recommendations of the Conservation Commission very seriously, and it has, uh, it has been one of the more conspicuous committees in town, because I think it has been one of the more active and probably effective committees in town. Any questions?
I have to move the confirmation of the appointment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Just about on time, ICAM Annual Report, do we have some spokespeople, and if she'll come forward and introduce yourselves? Ryan?
Robert Ryan, Skytop Road, I'm the president of the, of the Board of ICAM, uh, we're here tonight to deliver our annual report on the status of ICAM to the Board of Selectmen, as required in our agreement with the town, and just kinda bring everybody up to date.
I can't imagine that the people watching at home don't know what ICAM is, but, uh, tell us, tell us what ICAM is.
I would hope so. Um, and, um, you all received a copy of the report already, I believe, last week, uh, so I assume everybody has read it word-for-word and memorized most of it, uh, so my plan is to just kinda go through the highlights here and, um, touch on the, uh, the major points, and, uh, we've got a short video to show you afterwards to kind of, uh, give you an idea of what we've been up to. Um, and starting with the background for, for ICAM.
And again, ICAM is Community Access Media.
Correct. Um, the background is the background, and it's the same as it was last year, really, so, uh, but I do like to kinda go over some of the major points there, just so everybody knows, um, uh, who we are and where we came from, that sort of thing. Um, this started with the, uh, licensing of the two providers, cable providers in town, Verizon and Comcast, uh, Verizon back in two thousand and six, and Comcast in two thousand and seven. Seems like it was just a few years ago, actually, but it's, uh, we're almost, we're approaching the end of both of those ten-year licenses, uh, within the next few years. Um, and as you probably know, the licenses, um, allow these companies to operate in the town of Ipswich, to use the telephone poles, mount their equipment, uh, wherever they have to, and that sort of thing, so that's what the licensing is all about. Um, however, a key portion of that is what's called PEG access, PEG, uh, standing for Public Educational and Government Programming, and it's known usually as local access programming, and that's what we're all about. Um, the licenses, uh, that we're working under now, um, are supplying us with four percent of their gross revenues on a yearly basis, it's, it's paid quarterly, um, and, uh, both Comcast and Verizon are on the same schedule, four percent. Um, in addition, we had some capital upfront, um, two-hundred-thousand, uh, from Verizon to help us get started and buy all the equipment we needed and so forth, and, um, a hundred-thousand uh, from Comcast, which actually was, uh, just an advance and not, not really a, uh, a capital, uh, appointment. Um, but that provides us with adequate, uh, funding to, to do what we do, and, um, so we did sign a formal letter of agreement with, uh, with the town in March of two thousand and nine, and, uh, later on July of that year, we were lucky enough to find Beth Meyer, sitting next to me, uh, who has been our executive director ever since. Um, the first few years were spent just kinda getting set up and getting the infrastructure in place, uh, we did a lot of work, uh, getting the new, um, INET fiber optic system, which connects all of the town departments, uh, getting that in place, and ICAM did contribute, um, over a hundred thousand dollars to that project, too. Um, so, uh, we finally ended up going live in, uh, May of twenty-ten, and, uh, it's been going pretty well ever since. So that brings us to the present, uh, we're operating, uh, as we have from the beginning, as I'm sure you all know, in the basement level of this building, um, in the, in the same space, it's getting a bit cramped down there, um, as we expand and, and hire more people. We have two full-time employees and, uh, two part-time, I believe, right now, and, and a few other, uh, interns and so forth that, uh, kind of come and go on a as-needed basis. Um, the, uh, the board, I'd just like to introduce the, uh, the board, I believe they're all here, I'm not sure if Scott made it, but, uh...
He's here.
He's here.
Oh, okay, as I mentioned people's names, if you just raise your hand, just so everybody knows who you are. Um, our vice president is Scott Ames, um, Scott is a teacher and the communications coordinator at the high school, uh, so he's a tremendous help in coordinating all of the programming out of the school that has to come by way of fiber over here and then out to the, uh, to the network. Um, it's also his task to set up and, and, uh, and, uh, cover the town meetings, whatever else is, is held in the pack, and the school committee meetings. Um, our treasurer is, uh, Cushion Titcomb, Cushion is president, CEO of Ipswich Investment Management Company, our clerk is Ann Savage, she was the executive secretary for the Topseal Fair for many years, and she does the work, uh, does some work for WNBP in Newburyport, uh, doing some announcements and, uh, voice-overs, that sort of thing. Uh, Jim Maloney is a retired teacher, local artist, uh, he has experience in video production and photography, and I think I left out metalworking also. also. We have Dan Klasby. Dan is a CPA, also principal of his own company, Dan Klasby and Company, Certified Public Accountants. And last but not least, Greg Parachuk, who I think, I suspect everybody's familiar with, town IT manager. So that's the cast of characters. We have been awarding scholarships every year, several scholarships, to deserving high school students, graduating students who are planning on going on and pursuing careers in communications. We've expanded programming greatly over the last year. I did attach a weekly schedule to the report, just to give everybody, that's printed in the Chronicle, obviously, every week, too, but just to kind of show you how many programs we're getting out there. We have the Granicus System, which is the streaming service that allows you to go to the website, either our website or the town website, and playback any meeting or any show that we've recorded. Major accomplishments for the past year. We now have three channels operating previously. We were more or less just two channels. We were combining public and educational on a single channel, so we now have, for both Verizon and Comcast, we've got a separate channel for public education and government. So it took a lot of work and equipment and so forth, but we're happy to have that up and running. We just published a handbook for the organization, the ICAM Handbook, for new members coming in, or whoever wants to see what's going on. We're doing field production and studio workshops for both adults and video clubs for kids. We have done a lot of upgrading over the last year on just the equipment you see here. I think the audio problems have, at long last, been solved. I don't get any complaints. I'm hoping I don't see anybody coming forward tonight. I've been monitoring the playbacks pretty closely myself over the last year, and I think the audio really has been excellent. I mean, there's always a glitch here and there, I guess, but hopefully you're happy with that. We've also upgraded the equipment at the PAC over at the high school. We have upgraded our own editing systems downstairs, and one thing that we're quite proud of is we've just finished with a donation to the high school of a complete video editing system, which is an Apple product, and it's the whole computer and the software and large screen monitor. It's just one set or two?
Just one set, but we also donated a camcorder and its accessories as well.
Okay. All right. So that's all, I think, worth of, what, $20,000 or $30,000 on that ballpark?
For that...
For the whole suite?
For the editing suite, no, it's probably closer to $10,000.
$10,000, oh, sorry. Exaggerated. So, okay, so moving on, and just looking ahead, we are trying more to focus as much as we can on the public and the educational portion of broadcasting. We feel like we're doing a lot of the government meetings now, and that's all good, but we'd like to see more coming out of the schools and the public, and we think there's a lot of maybe untapped potential there. Not yet, no. Yeah, at the end. Some of the new projects that we're discussing, one that's had a pretty good response is to, we're just starting to look into this, the possibility of developing an ICAM app for smartphones. And one of the big problems with access programming is the cable companies will not put our programming information on the on-screen guide, something a lot of access organizations are working on, trying to convince them to do it, but in the meantime, it's very confusing. If you turn on the channel, you go to the government channel or the education channel, there's something on there, but you have no way of knowing what it is unless you want to go get your Chronicle and look it up. So we're thinking we will try to develop an app, encourage people to download it, and an additional use for that that has come to mind is the possibility of using it for communication with the town during an emergency. And as an example, in the big storm that we had, not just this weekend, but the one previous to that a few weeks ago, we had a lot of trees down, power was out for a long time, and I think what made me think of this is, we have a situation at my home where we have a patient on a ventilator and a lot of medical equipment, and when the power goes out, it's, we have battery backup, of course, and all that, but if it's going to be out for an extended period of time, it's something we need to know because we have to go and get a generator. And it's really difficult, there's no way, really, for anybody in town to find out what's going on when these kinds of things happen. So we're thinking maybe that would be a good use of the app also, is to find some way to coordinate that, so that people know, you know, that, does it look like it's just going to be, you know, is it one tree down, is it going to be a half-hour power outage and maybe an hour, some sort of an estimate, or does it look like we're in this for the long haul? And I feel sure there's other people in my situation that that information will be very valuable for them, so that's something we can discuss going forward, and we think it's a good idea.
Is this an app that's available elsewhere in the country, or are you thinking of having an app developer work on this for you?
It'll be developed, or it'll just be for us, for Ipswich. But that's not a bad idea, if we can sell the rights or something.
If it's a one-off, I would certainly look at that as a business opportunity. We have the talent and the expertise to do that within our current circle of employees, friends, volunteers?
Well, do we have the talent, are you saying? No, we'll have to go outside for this. But it's, could be done fairly reasonably, from what I understand. The second idea is the, be interested to see your reaction to this one. There's been talk of doing some sort of a call-in show for this meeting.
Would you like to poll the board, just to see if you think that's a good idea?
Maybe during citizen rallies, and we thought, for instance, people could...
You do want support for this organization?
Yes. Maybe they could send in their questions by email or something like that, do this, I don't know, once a month or something. A lot of people, I think, may be reluctant to come down and stand at the microphone and all that, but maybe we could sort through a few questions and do that during the first 20 minutes, something along those lines, so...
Interesting idea.
We'll keep you posted on that. Okay, the last item is that we're aware that the town is in the process now of renegotiating the licenses. First Verizon is coming due in a couple of years, and...
One is in, what, 16, the other 17, something like that?
Exactly, yeah.
What are the challenges facing you in those negotiations?
Well, it's always, it's always a tough negotiation, and I think this one is particularly important, just because of the way the whole communications and cable industry is going. You've probably seen announcements just recently that HBO and CBS, I think it is, have announced they're going to go to live streaming, direct streaming, which means you don't need cable. And it's all of the others that are already there, Netflix and Hulu and whoever else, that sort of thing. So the industry is changing rapidly, and this go-around for the license renewal is, I think it's important that we go out and try to at least equal the deal that we have with them now to keep this whole thing going, because who knows what it's going to look like 10 years from now, so...
Let us assume that cable becomes either less prevalent or not necessary in five years. What would happen to public access media at that point?
Well...
What are the options?
Nobody really knows at this point, but the catch in all of this is that no matter what happens, you're still going to need an internet connection. And guess who supplies the internet connection? The same companies. So they will find a way to make up the difference. And one case has already been challenged in court, where one of the cable companies tried to say that they're no longer a cable company because they're supplying programming via internet, and the court's ruled in that case that programming is programming and nothing changes, so if that's an early indication, I don't know the way things are going to go, so it's something to watch closely. Okay, near the end. Financially, we are on very solid footing. We've just completed a complete formal audit, as required by the state, and we've finished all of the necessary forms and tax returns and all of that that's required to keep our nonprofit status. And it was no easy task, believe me. So in summary, that's about it. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have. We look forward to working with the town of Ipswich in the future, and we do have a very short, I think, what is it, a two-minute video?
It's just over three, yep.
That I wanted to show, just to give a kind of an example of the programming that we've been doing. If we could just run that?
Please do.
Okay.
It might be easier to see with the lights off.
We can turn them off if you think that will help?
At least one, it'll be a little... I can't see the audio, but that's okay. It's okay. I just want to go over some of the stuff that we do. It's a variety of stuff that we cover, that's Clark Pond and the Humane Society. We do a pet of the month type of program, and there's this program that went on at Merini's Farm this summer, but just a variety of stuff. We cover a bunch of the parades, Fourth of July, Veterans Parade, Memorial Day Parade. We pretty much cover all three most of the time. And this was a Gettysburg Address done at the library. And most of these are covered by volunteers. This, we have a lot of kids that do produce their own shows. This was Crooked with Charisma. And Maj Posh was a Trivial Game Show hosted by this young man. A Moment of Science, covered by these two young ladies, that they improvised their little project with dry ice. That's part of our animation group that we do a bunch of shows with. We cover a whole bunch of the sporting events, all ages. As young as you tend to high schoolers and a variety of sports, and it really depends on the parents that are available to cover these. Again, it's just the amount that we cover, we have to rely on volunteers to do them. That was one of the high school games last year. And youth soccer, no, the girls, youth soccer. Back to the high school. Cheerleading. That was covered by a young lady. I think she was an injured cheerleader and 12-years-old, and she covered her whole tournament. This was given to us by John Thomas. These are old Ipswich football games, back in the 50s and 60s, and these are some of the stuff that we cover at the school, from the different graduations, as well as the elementary school moving-up ceremony, and the performances they do there, whether it's at the middle school, high school. We've done a little bit at Winthrop as well. And we do a lot of programs with the Council on Aging. That was a program about scams, and then Paul Valcour has a monthly program he does, and we cover one-time events. We also have a lot of religious programmings that we do, which is the Methodist Church Service and the Lutheran and this other service that comes in, former gentleman. We also have a variety of shows, around town, Exploring the Arts. These are all volunteers that do them. Mr. David Welsh, he does his own show, and actually, we just posted, because he has his own equipment, and this is some more Exploring the Arts program. Paul doing a one-time show, I believe, at the museum, and we do also take outside programming as long as it's sponsored by an Ipswich resident. So we've played over, well over 2,000, closing in on 3,000 programs on ICAM over the last five years.
Thank you very much. Gives you an idea of not only what you all can do, but the richness of activities going on in Ipswich.
Yeah, yeah.
You have volunteers to support you. We can really find a lot to broadcast and bring to...
Yeah.
...the community at large.
Exactly. ICAM is open to everybody that lives in Ipswich, works in Ipswich, or goes to school in Ipswich, and they can cover any event that they want, or entertainment project. We just, today, started a new video club with 10 kids that range from the ages of sixth through eighth grade, and hopefully we'll be producing a monthly show with these youngsters.
In terms of levels of activity compared to communities of about our size, how do we compare in terms of level of activity on our public...
I think extremely active, to be quite honest. I think we do a lot more programs than most.
Other questions? Comments?
I just have a couple. First of all, thank you all very much for all your hard work. It's really great channels, and I'm sure that there's a lot of people that take advantage of that. I know that I often do myself. One of our goals, I think at one point in time, was to try and at least not be able to cover live, but to cover video in another meeting room, you know, depending on the conflicting meetings and so on and so forth, especially on this floor down in Room C. And I was just wondering if that has any traction, or if that's in the plans for the future, or...
Wait, it's, it's still on the table. We keep talking about it. I think at this point, the logistics of it, we haven't really seen the need for it yet. We feel like we can, between here and the school, there's a wired studio slash meeting room available for just about every meeting that needs to be covered, but the logistics of doing it down the hall, although it seems, you know, just down the hall, and I'll let Beth speak more to this, but there's a whole problem with, there's no control room down there, so the equipment would be out in the open, so it would be something maybe you'd have to roll down there and set up for every meeting, which means another person, and also means another producer, because you can't have one person directing two meetings at the same time. So there's a lot to it that's, just doesn't seem to be making a lot of sense at this point. I think if it were, you know, if we absolutely needed to, it's clearly not out of the question, not off the table yet, but it's still under discussion, I guess.
That would be if we were to produce them both live simultaneously, but if there was a recording capability that could then show something at another time, is that as complicated?
It is. Whether we're live through tape, it's just as complicated, because the setup is the same, except for you're not just pushing a button to go over live. You're right, we wouldn't be able to go over live either. I think the biggest complication is the audio setup, having that not a permanent situation down there, because I know that room is used for a multitude of things besides just meetings, but also not having a separate control room to be in, to be able to run the equipment. Alex, who's in the control room right now, is running these microphones and the cameras and the recordings, and to be in the same room at the same time would be very difficult. And you're talking about a, I know Glenn Gibbs, I talked with him, and he, I said, "Well, yeah, if you have a audio system you can hook up." And he's like, "Oh, never mind," because it is, the audio is actually more complicated than the cameras and the feasibility. We don't have enough staffing to be able to cover. We don't have enough staffing to be able to cover a couple of meetings a night. We would be, that's another shortfall as well. But also too, I think at this time too, we're unclear of how many meetings are we not covering. I know it was a big issue, and the zoning and the planning sometimes collide, but that really hasn't happened in a while. And I know we've been covering the school building committee meetings, as well as the school audit committee meetings.
Well, I mean, I think that's, you know, that's worth looking at. You know, I know some of the committees that, you know, I sit on meet in a place that, you know, obviously, they still do important work.
Mm-hmm, oh, sure.
You know, they never had the opportunity to present that work, you know, to the public, you know, like, for example, in this room. I mean, some of the, you know, for example, some of the subcommittees of the utilities, you know, it'd probably be worthwhile for the shade tree and beautification has a great impact on the community shellfish that we have to go over and so on and so forth. So, you know, maybe the way we should look at it is, you know, kinda get you a list of what we are missing and have your folks come up with maybe an estimate of what it would take. You know, I'm looking at it a little more simply. I mean, I'm, you know, looking at a camera that you turn on and, you know, some audio and, you know, I guess, to date myself, the old, you know, VCR camera, and then, you know, take the tape or the disc and you bring it down and you, you know, you're able to broadcast the show.
Yeah, with the meetings, again, the video's probably the easiest part of it. People will watch bad video, but they won't listen to bad audio, and that's really the complicated part. But one of the things to consider, as you say, they have presentations that they put together, I wonder what the feasibility would be to do it in the control, in our studio downstairs, if it's a smaller group, where there is microphones already set up, where there is cameras already set up and a switcher. And then it would just be somebody that would have to run the equipment would be the one step.
So there's downtime in the studio where meetings could be scheduled?
Well, again, it's first come, first served, so whoever signs up for the room first gets it. And we can't take priority, so if somebody else had already signed up for it, we really can't bump them, because it's for anybody to use. But yeah, sure.
So as Mr. Sapitsky points out, there are a number of utility subcommittee meetings, which I think, if not the voters, the ratepayers would do well to listen to from time to time to understand what some of the decisions are that are being made. But they, and I don't think it's occurred to them, to schedule their meetings in your studio.
Right.
But the studio is available for scheduling. So now-
If you wanna have those folks get in touch with us, and we, you know, we could talk to them about, you know, how to set that up and all that. And the other thing is that people forget sometimes is there's a meeting room at the school that's all set up, the ensemble room where the school committee meets.
So actually, there are three areas in town that are set up for-
Right.
...a live broadcast.
Ideally, we'd like to go with what's already there.
And I think people are starting to use the school more often as things have conflict with this room.
I think in part, everyone knows that this room is available for meetings.
Right.
I'm not sure that people are as aware of the fact that the ensemble room is available to the general public for meetings, and certainly, as long as I've been around, I didn't realize that we could suggest people use the studio for meetings as well. So we do have three locations, they're all set up, ready to go, and as schedules permit, they could be used.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Probably be a good idea to get the utilities people out of the utilities building anyway. Get them out and about and meet the rest of the town. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Just one quick question. When do we go on hi-def?
Well, we are hi-def, except for the cable companies have to make us hi-def. So that would be negotiated with Comcast and Verizon, the new contract, but all our equipment is high-definition.
'Cause I think people wanna see this board on hi-def.
Absolutely.
No doubt about it.
I'm trying to appeal what the people want.
Yeah, actually, that's-
This group on hi-def is what they're asking for.
I think that's actually a very realistic-
I think the younger members of the board are more interested in that. A little fuzziness goes a long way.
But that is something that would be realistic to expect us to negotiate as a cable advisory committee, to be hi-def, and 90% of our equipment is hi-def. You can't even buy equipment these days, it isn't. So it's definitely feasible, probably in like a two- or three-year period.
One last note, I did notice that when Peter, is he still here? Yeah, when you were making his announcement about his new shop downtown, it occurred to me that that type of thing might be a good thing for us to do also, you know, go down and do a little video of the opening of a new store and introduce Peter and so forth. So-
Well, as I watched his store sort of secrete itself into a grand opening over about a month, I've happened to walk by there a lot, and it did occur to me that this is something we probably should do with all newcoming merchants or businesses in town.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think that-
Would be a good idea.
Yeah, and it's something that we can do without, I think, it's not a great cost to the town, and I think to give people that initial opportunity to be heard, seen, and people get a sense of it's a good idea. So just, you know, you've now met them, so now just make sure that they show up with a camera, Peter. Okay, any other comments, questions? Anyone from the audience has something? Members of the board that they'd like to bring the public's attention? Okay, and the audit went well?
Yes.
Okay, good.
It did.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And keep us in touch with the negotiations. Okay. Okay, arcing back to some comments I made earlier, an update on the town's website. I think we all know who you are, but tell us who you are and what you represent.
Jennifer Breaker, Special Assistant to the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager.
Greg Parachek, IT Director for the town.
We are here tonight on behalf of the website task force, and we have one of our other members, Glenn Gibbs, in the audience. Carrie Bates was gonna be here, but she's home with a cold. We're here tonight to provide the board with an update regarding the progress of the new website. Over the past several months, the task force has been meeting and working on gathering information from other communities and our consultant Civic Plus on how to present information and services to the public via our website. We've analyzed our current website deficiencies, and we are working on timelines and processes with Civic Plus. The goal of the new website is to provide timely, accurate information that is easy to find and informative to the users or customers. Customers can be citizens, business owners, contractors, town employees, et cetera. We're gonna share some highlights of the work we've completed, some upcoming highlights, and some features of the new website. Some highlights of the work that's been completed by the task force include consulting with other communities who have used Civic Plus to better understand how the process unravels with Civic Plus, so we could be the best prepared to work with the consultant and use our time wisely. We've had many conference calls with the consultant to establish goals, timelines, and objectives for the website. We've had three days of onsite consulting. In mid-September, a consultant from Civic Plus was here and spent time with the task force and each department, and the department head and point personnel for those departments to review the content of their websites, specific requirements for the departments, analyze their content, and establish content-related goals for the departments. After these sessions, goal reminders were sent to the departments, and follow-up assistance was provided by task force members. The task force, in conjunction with Civic Plus consultants, have designed a layout for the new website, complete with logo and colors taken from the town's recent branding initiative. All tabs, navigation menus, and labels have been thoroughly thought out and placed for easy navigation, for easy use, and to be easily understood. Finding information easily is key and vital to the website design and goals. Some upcoming highlights include the migration deadline date. Later this week is our migration deadline, where the content on our website will be frozen, and Civic Plus will begin moving the content over to our new website. Between the migration date and the website reveal, there will be a few project check-ins with Civic Plus and the task force. Also during this time, the task force will meet and develop a guidebook or best practices for the website that will be distributed. In early 2015, the consultant will return to provide three days of onsite training to all employees. Prior to the launch of the new website, the task force will market the new site to all customers. There will be a public rollout of the new site, press releases, and live demonstrations. We anticipate a mid-February 2015 launch date. A couple highlights of the new website include the customers, that is, anyone accessing the website will be able to subscribe to various aspects of the website. They will be able to have agendas, town meeting information, or specific department news and updates emailed or text directly to them. There are various interfaces that allow the customers to contact staff, either through a Contact Us system, which is generally used for inquiries, or a reporting issue system for complaints and issues. And we are making sure that there is a continuous layout throughout the website, so that the same thing is located on the same area of all webpages, which will allow easier use by the customers. We're also making sure that the fonts, sizes, colors, et cetera, being used on the different pages are continuous.
I just wanted to kinda add to that, that we're gonna be combining the police, the fire, and utilities with the town website, so it's all gonna be integrated with the same look, same feel, so it'll be easy for everybody to navigate throughout the whole areas.
Will they be giving up their individual websites?
Yes.
Who actually hosts the website?
It's for Civic Plus? Civic Plus does for themselves.
No, they will be hosting our website at the end of the day?
Yes.
And where are they located?
Kansas.
Where, suppose we had a nor'easter here in the greater Ipswich area, and a lot of things went down, would the website still be up? I mean, are they, how does all that work?
Well, if you lost your internet capability at your house, obviously, you wouldn't be able to get to it no matter where it is. If you lost your electricity, the same thing would happen.
Sure, but where, the hosting activity, or could that be anywhere in the country?
They have, actually, they have, I'm trying to remember now, I don't have the exact location, but they do have a second site, but it's still out in Midwest.
I love the words migration and reveal and so on. Basically, this thing is gonna come up about mid-February, is that your hope at this point?
Yes.
In the meantime, have there been six, seven-year-olds and the odd citizen come in and be a part of this discussion, or has this primarily been the work of the task force and the consultants?
This is the work of the task force and the consultant.
Okay, so the first time the residents will have a chance to see how user-friendly or what it's all about will be when?
It'll be mid-February.
That'll be the first time?
Correct.
And the track record of Civic Plus in terms of migrating stuff from one system to the other is pretty good?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you don't envision any major problems in that regard?
No, prior to the launch, we will spend, Greg and I will spend about two weeks reviewing the website after the migration, before the reveal to the employees. And then during training, the employees will train on the live website, 'cause the migration will not be perfect. Our website does not fit perfectly into the Civic Plus. So during training, they'll be making some changes to their pages, to the actual website. So they will be, one, updating the website to be the end result that we want, and two, learning how to use the new website at the same time.
So many more employees will have access to the website in terms of adding content, updating content?
As part of this process, each department was tasked with identifying a point person for the department, who will be the all-knowledgeable website person for the department, and we've had meetings with those point people and the department head to hold them accountable for learning the new website.
Now, when they run up against a snag, do they call Civic Plus, or do they talk to the two of you and you sort it out?
They can call Civic Plus, they can call the IT department, it will be.
Okay, now are you getting additional training on all of this stuff?
Yeah, there's gonna be administrative training that we're gonna have.
Have you visited or seen any of their websites that-
We've looked at over thirty of them.
Thirty?
Well, over thirty.
And they're pretty easy to navigate and-
Very easy to navigate. I personally spoke with three other communities that have gone through the process, and they said they really want to have changed the thing that working as a consultant was the easiest part, and that they've seen big improvements in their website and the ease of using the website.
Okay, questions?
If I wanted to go look at, like, the local website that Civic Plus has done recently, what town or city should I look at?
There's some examples, none of them are gonna fit to a T, what we're doing, but some Massachusetts communities that are good examples is Nantucket, Northampton.
I don't expect, you know, just a taste of what it is that they're doing.
You could also look at Dubuque.
Is that a good one?
Yes. Dubuque is one of our favorites.
Was Chelmsford a little this one, the person came? Did they do news?
I don't know if Chelmsford was done by. During this process, we also, for inspiration ideas, we looked at other websites outside of the Civic Plus. We looked at all sorts of websites to see how they're communicating their information, color ideas, how to label things. So we didn't exclusively look at Civic Plus websites. When designing the layout, we stuck with Civic Plus. But we have looked at more websites than anyone should look at.
Will there be any downtime, like, when we activate the new site? No downtime for the public?
No.
Perfect.
So it'll go from slightly primitive to wow?
Well, we do anticipate putting up after the cutoff date, which is the end of this week, some sort of announcement on the website that we are undergoing some improvements, and to stay tuned, to let people know if they are having a hard time finding something to give them a heads up about what's going on.
Okay, so the website won't be updated between now and February?
It will be updated. Staff will have to keep a list after the end of this week. Anything that is loaded to the website after Friday will not be carried over to the new website. So for instance, every time we upload a set of Board of Selectmen's minutes, we'll add that to our running sheet of things we will have to upload to the new site.
Okay, so, oh, okay, what they're doing is taking what you've got and migrating.
Right.
And anything after that isn't migrated?
Correct.
Do they come back and migrate that, or do you have to put it back in again?
We will put that back in as part of training.
And we've spent considerable time going through our website right now, cleaning it up and under the recommendations of Civic Plus during a training session out here, or their consulting session. And so we're in, you know, pretty good shape, I'd say.
Yes.
Has that been helpful, just having them-
Absolutely.
...some eyes on our current website, recommendation about what to save, what to junk?
It's been tremendously helpful. We also are planning on having the consultant come back roughly six months after the launch of the website to provide kind of a check-in, to make sure we're being held accountable for what we need to do, to suggest ways we can still improve upon the website and help us navigate moving forward after that point.
Yeah, one of the goals, which I wanted to mention to you, from the consultant's perspective, when she came out, was basically to go to every department and ask them, "How can we better serve the public?" Without, you know-
That's a great question, by the way.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the tools, you know, the information that's gonna be available and the tools that'll be available, just to make it easier for all our departments to do their daily business. Just wanna make it easy for the citizens to be able to go to the website and get the information, and when they go there, find it easily. That's the whole, you know, goal and purpose of the website.
I would also like, I think that the department directors and the staff of the departments should get a big kudos. They've worked really hard over the past couple weeks, on top of all their regular work, rewriting documents, editing documents, editing documents, moving things on their website. They've put in a huge amount of time and a great effort on this so far.
Can I just ask one sort of unrelated question, but while you're here, Greg? We've strived for a long time to achieve online community status, you know, up and running and doing- Do you have the status, you know, up and running, running, is it still possible?
Well, we have online permitting available right now. I mean, it's just, it's not available to all the departments yet.
But is that a separate package, or is that something that has nothing to do with Civic Plus?
No, it's not a separate, outside, I mean, we just, you know.
But it'll be linked to them, right?
Yeah, we link to them, yeah.
One of the nice features of the website is anywhere that we link, it provides a much cleaner link to outside vendors. The, for example, the iCam video, rather than linking to a separate site, will be able to be listed on our current site with matching colors and fonts to our website through work they've done, and they work with the same vendor that we use for the meetings through iCam. Currently, the listing for iCam is just all of the events that have been aired, and you can reformat it to list upcoming events, recently aired, and then everything in alphabetical order, or by name of the event. So they, Civic Plus works really well with a lot of the other features we use. And we'll also be able to, over time, and it will be a goal that we will establish for departments, take forms that we use. An example would be the banner form that's used by the Board of Selectmen's office, and enter it in their form feature on the website, so someone can fill it out on the website and submit it electronically to the office.
And the other question I have is, I've noticed on a lot of websites, people can, you know, type in a complaint, request for services and so on and so forth. What's the tracking mechanism to make sure that those things are addressed?
With this system, we have a citizens tracker request module, there's an active module that's tailored just for that. And basically, you know, the citizens would send in their query to whomever, and that would get, that gets logged, and they'd be able to do follow-ups back and forth.
Okay, they would, or could the town manager do that, to make sure that?
Both could.
It depends on who we set the workflow to, but, you know, more than likely, probably would be the department, if they sent in a request to the DPW department for a particular, you know, problem, then, you know, that would get, that would get logged, and then they would be able to, you know, do a follow-up back and forth electronically.
The citizen tracker works in a way that there are preset complaints. Some of the communities we've looked at, they have their top ten complaints at the beginning, and then the rest are in alphabetical order. And they can be very generic, light-out, pothole, except, you know, snow on sidewalk, et cetera. And then there's a blank spot. And you set in the background, if I click light-out, it would automatically, once the person hits submit, the email to the electric light manager. And it tracks it both for the employees to be able to look at it, and it allows them, if they've responded recently to the same type of complaint, to use their previous response. It kind of saves it for them. And it also allows the applicant who submitted it to go back in, depending on the level of request, and see where it is in the process of being fixed.
Okay, and is there a box that's checked that the issue is resolved?
Yes.
And where does that?
I mean, where does that exist? Does that exist with the manager of the town? It wouldn't get full, it would stay within the system and the log system, it's just that you could access, but, I mean, it wouldn't, I'm not sure, to be honest with you, because I haven't gotten that deep into the module, but it, there may be a mechanism where you could send it to upper management, I'm not sure.
Yeah. I believe it would. And I don't think we have to do that, but I mean, I think every, you know, just as an audit trail to somehow make sure that things are being addressed in a timely manner, that's all.
I'd have to check that.
Whatever, just a thought. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. You have a comment?
I'd like to thank the task force. They've been working really, really hard on this. And I notice they occasionally are laughing when they're talking to the consultants, so I think that's a sense of improvement, and they've worked very, very hard to, with individual departments, and really held people's feet to the fire to move this project forward. So they deserve a lot of recognition for the work they've done, and I want to thank them.
Good. Thank you very much. We look forward to progress reports and mid-February. Thank you. Sale of a portion of town-owned land on 32 Turkey Shore. This sounds familiar.
Glenn Gibbs, Planning Director. This sounds familiar because we discussed this at the town meeting in the spring of this year. And at that time, there was a vote from the town meeting to authorize the selectmen to dispose of the property. We have here tonight Doug DeAngelis, who is the abutter to this property, who made the initial request to the town. And I also have, I don't recall if I attached in my memo any maps that show the property. If I can, you would have seen those earlier this year, but just as a reminder, that shows the portion of the property that would be sold to the, to the abutter. It's four thousand square feet in size, which is about one-fourth of the total size of the parcel, which is nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet, and it's right across the river from Town Hall on Turkey Shore. As I described in the memo, the action of the town meeting was to authorize you to sell, subject to several conditions. One, that you sell it for no less than forty thousand, four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Two, that the buyers be responsible for all the costs associated with the disposition of the parcel, including the survey costs and the recording fees. Three, that no structures shall be built on the property beside the existing structure. And four, that the parcel shall be subject to a no-cut restriction. The, as I, as you know, the Land Disposition Committee had recommended in favor of this prior to town meeting as well. At town meeting, we, there was a considerable discussion on this item, it was a close vote for approval. There were several comments or issues that were raised at the meeting, which I've responded to in my memo, and I could go over briefly here today if you'd like me to. One is a comment that the Land Disposition Committee had not been intended by the selectmen to advise the selectmen as to whether individual departments had, that they were only intended to advise for specific town parcels, but not on any other issues, such as the financial implications of land sales, or to make recommendations. A second comment was that the minimum value established by the disposition committee should have considered the additional value that accrues to the abutter's property once the town land is added to it. And third, that the owner should be required to pay for the lost tax revenue that the town would have received had he bought the property from the town when he first learned that his driveway and garage incurred upon it, which is back in 2001. So to the first point, again, as is outlined in the memo that you receive in your packet, if you actually go back and look at the policy that the selectmen adopted in 1998, you'll see that the, that the comment is simply wrong, that it's clear and stated very clearly in the policy that the Land Disposition Committee should provide the selectmen with a report that includes the assessed value of the property and a recommended sale price, and also a recommended action. It also goes on to say that the report, that the committee in making its report shall consider the financial impact to the town upon the disposition or retention of said property, and then a number of other issues as well. So it was clearly the intention of the selectmen that the Land Use Disposition Committee, or the Land Disposition Committee, consider a wide range of issues when making its recommendation. The second argument having to do with, instead of assessing it just based on the value of the property separately, which is what had been done by the assessor and led to the four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollar estimate, that is actually a fair point. And I went back to the assessor and asked her to calculate the land value of the property, adding this four thousand square foot parcel to it, then determining from that what the value of the land would be. She did that, and increased the land value by six thousand, six hundred dollars, which is twenty-five-hundred higher than the forty-one, fifty, forty-one-hundred-dollar amount. Then, on the third issue, that if the abutter should have been paying taxes, what was that dollar amount that would have been lost? I went, I met with the assessor, got from her the tax classification for each year, did an analysis, and came up with another thousand dollars, thousand, twelve dollars of revenue that the town would have received if the property had been sold in 2001. So adding that number to the six thousand, six hundred, we come up with a sale price of seven thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars, which is considerably more than the forty-one, fifty, which is the minimum amount that was recommended for sale by town meeting. I discussed that number with the abutter, and he indicated that he was willing to pay that amount, if that was the recommendation of the sale price by the, by the selectmen. And what we're looking for tonight is for you to consider and to indicate what your intentions are. If you do vote to sell the property for that amount, then there are a number of steps that have to happen, that will be done subsequent to that, before we're actually able to make the sale. We need to have a deed, we need to have all these restrictions put into place, we have to have a A&R plan developed, to the planning board, to have it divided, so there's a number of steps will have to happen before the property can actually be transferred. But none of that will begin until you give an indication of what your intentions are.
Okay, and I do need to emphasize for the, for the board, that the town meeting vote did not require us, it authorized us.
Correct.
This is not a directive, this is a recommendation from this committee.
Correct.
So it really rests with the majority of this board, whatever decision we make. An A&R plan, really? How much more complicated will it be to determine the boundary and reassign the deeds upon sale? And you said there's a lot we'll have to go on if we approve this today.
Well, an A&R plan, it was drawn by a surveyor to actually divide off the lot that costs a couple thousand, or whatever that dollar amount is, which will be paid for by the abutter. And that gets endorsed by the planning board, and that needs to become part of the transaction, the A&R which divides it and identifies the boundaries, that's one part of the process. There needs to be a title.
What is the planning board's role in that? Just refresh our memory.
All approval-not-required plans must be endorsed by the planning board. So if there's any alteration of land in the town of Ipswich, it has to go in front of the planning board to afford to modify those lines. And actually, you can, if you were looking to confirm boundary lines, it will also, can go on the planning board, in front of the planning board, even if you're not changing any lines. The one time where you may not have to go to the board is if you have two properties that are owned by the same owner, and they're looking to combine them into one lot, that can be generally be done without planning board action, but otherwise, that's the process.
Okay, so it gets surveyed, it gets?
There's a deed that has to be prepared, and that has to have all of the conditions in place to the satisfaction of the town.
And there are some additional conditions that go with the sale?
Well, this is what they were already, and the town will probably want to have a title search done. Well, actually, no, I'm talking about the other property. No, that wouldn't be our concern. We're not to worry about that. I was thinking about the next one we're going to talk about.
Okay, questions, comments?
Glenn, on the conditions that you have on here, those go forward if the abutter decides to sell the whole property?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, they go on to the property, they run with the property.
It's a newly configured parcel when it gets done?
Right, but I think he's also referring to the conditions about there being a no-cut restriction. That'll stay in place.
They are deed restrictions, right?
Yes, they'll be deed restrictions, there'll be deed restrictions, not allowing any more structures to be built on that property. So they will continue on permanently, really, with the property.
Glenn, I think there was one other issue that I'm not sure you addressed, and that was that for some reason, this was, you know, very precious waterfront property that, you know, could be used for a park or some other purpose at some point in time. Is there any truth to that from your opinion?
Not in my opinion. I mean, I don't know if you've looked at the property.
I'm somewhat familiar with it, but I haven't walked down it. It drops off, doesn't it?
Yeah, it drops off.
Rather steeply, actually.
It runs right down to the river. The only part that's level is the part where the driveway is and the shed.
And the town owns the rest of that property right along there? And we do have a park on the other side of Green Street, or at least public access there?
Yes. Right, we're talking about creating some, some public access off the Riverwalk, right here at the Riverwalk here at Town Hall. And that's still in the, in the process, still in the plans. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I think the idea that the town should be very careful about selling off waterfront property, it makes sense, it's a good principle. I just don't think in this instance, when you, when you look at it, we had the Conservation Commission look at this carefully too, and everyone sort of came to the same conclusion that, that, you know, there was this longstanding encroachment of that, and it was a small area, and there wasn't a lot of value to that, and if we could get a decent amount of money back, and I think we're talking now about almost, almost doubling the amount that, of the minimum that had been recommended initially, and then there'll be taxes paid on it too. I mean, not a huge amount, but obviously that'll be something else that'll come to the town.
Any comments from the audience? I see a member of the Finance Committee here. Have any, have any comments with regard to what you've heard? I think that's a good sign, okay?
I'd just like to cautiously approve, just being a real estate attorney. I don't understand how a conveyance happened without a plot plan being done, and why the shed wasn't an issue in the past, and you just, as a town, wouldn't want to be in a position where there's vacant land and people putting up structures, and they could go to the town and acquire more land, and it's, it's a good price, but it's really, you know.
Well, we do, I mean, if your point is, do we know if the, if Mr. DeAngelis put it up himself? We know that he did not.
No, I know he doesn't, but part of buying property is getting a plot plan, so I would think that that would have happened prior to his acquisition, and it may have come up as part of the transaction.
Well, he's here, he can speak to that, if you'd like to ask him the question directly. Doug?
Yeah.
Now, while you're coming up, this won't make you feel any better, but having been here long enough, when you take a look at some of the plot plans and some of the transfers that have gone on in Ipswich over the years, it's amazing that there isn't more dispute than we have currently.
I did. So, I'll just give you the short version of how this happened at the closing, because this, have you seen the property?
I just see it on the map.
Okay, well, there's a chain links fence that comes up from the Green Street Bridge, and it ends where the driveway is and the shed is. And the prior owners had been there for thirty-five years or something. And so at the closing, they pushed the mortgage, sorry, the title survey, which is usually a fairly simple plot plan. And it didn't really look like the house was on the property, and I said, gee, it looks like the house isn't on the property. And, ah, let me finish. So, so, so they said, oh, you know, the title insurance company seems to be okay with it, and like, geez, you know, I kind of like to know that the house is on the property. So, so we had it surveyed, and...
Would you like to buy more land from the town?
And, and, so I didn't do the closing, I had it surveyed and found out that the shed and the driveway was not on the property, and, and the owners were like, beside themselves, they're like, oh my God, we always thought we owned this, we thought it owned, went to the chain link fence, and blah, blah, blah. So I basically said... So I basically said, you know, they had like a contingent closing, I was like, you know, give me 500 bucks, if the town ever makes me move the shed, then I'll move the shed aside your yard. And that's basically what happened, and I, so it wasn't until I decided that, talking to Glenn, that the process for doing a boundary line adjustment might be okay and might work out, that I decided to go forward.
How long have you been there?
Thirteen years.
Thirteen years? Okay, this has been discussed and looked at from a variety of different perspectives. Whatever concerns I had after, actually, the board had voted to approve this, we then went, I went to the Finance Committee, who then gave me a really difficult half hour, and I took that information back to the Board of Selectmen, and they said, well, you know, some of those ideas probably have merit, and we then reversed ourselves at town meeting, much to Mr. De Angelis' upset. We agreed that these were conditions and issues that should be explored, they have been. We certainly have a better price than we had as originally proposed. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll move that we go ahead cautiously, based on Judy's remarks, with the sale of the property.
Is there a second?
I second.
Yeah, and I think the, Mr. Sapitsky has really been the leader in this regard. To the extent that there is valuable town-owned property that does have the potential of future water access, we probably should keep an eye on it and not sell it at all. And I think this is kind of an unusual place. I've gone down there several times and kicked the chain link fence. I think it's there mostly to protect people from falling over the edge into the river.
He's not doing a very good job of that.
So I'm not sure that the adjacent town-owned property, assuming there isn't a significant investment on the part of the town, I'm not sure that that has any particular value, and this little piece, I'm not sure at any point in time would have been a particular asset to the town. So I think this is a good thing to do, I think the owner has agreed to all of the reasonable conditions that have been put forward. Is there further discussion?
Can I make just one suggestion? The motion perhaps should include, subject to the conditions that have been outlined.
Okay. We can make that explicit. Believe me, that was my assumption, that it incorporated all of the presentation, the dollar value, the other conditions, the deed restrictions, and any ancillary investment that has to be made to make this thing happen will be borne by the owner.
Correct, he understands that.
Okay, with all of those caveats, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Finally.
Well, if you've gotten over the first hurdle...
That's right, you got over the first. Okay, the second item here to discuss tonight also was acted upon at town meeting, and this was a offer of land as opposed to disposition of town-owned land. This is a parcel at 109 High Street. Do you want me to pass around a plan of that, or...
I think it would be a good idea, real quick.
Let's find it now. This is a 6,800 square foot parcel of land at the corner of High Street and Avery Street. It's on the western edge of the High Street Bridge, and this parcel is owned by Joan Morse, who lives kitty-corner to this parcel. She approached the town and offered to gift it to the town, and because of the closure of Avery Street and the location of that property right at that termination point, it offers some benefit to the town in that it can be used as an area for vehicles turning around as they come to the end of Avery Street. And so that was the defined benefit, and town meeting voted to authorize the selectmen to accept the property. I spoke recently with the owner and her attorney, Richard Kelman, they would like to do the transaction this year so they can have the benefit of the tax benefit that accrues from the gift in this tax year, and they have prepared a deed, which I have, and I will work with town council. One thing that, well, we may want to do is to do a tax title search to see if there's any clouds on the title. It's usually something that the town council recommends, and I suspect he's going to recommend that here.
In terms of the process, all of the steps that were discussed in the previous project of moving land from the town to a private owner, do they also apply when a private owner moves land to the town?
Well, this is a lot less involved, because there's no, it's just, we're taking the entire, we would take the entire parcel, so there's no land division that has to happen.
So this isn't, okay.
So that triangular piece of land that you see, that is the parcel.
Okay. It's like it butts a little bit here and there, but you're saying that is it?
That's it. So that parcel in its entirety would be deeded to the town. Second thing that makes it simpler is that there were no conditions attached to the acceptance as there were with the other property.
It's not really our business between a donor and the IRS, but do you have any idea what the value of this might be?
Not much, but I can't put it, well, I can tell you what the assessed value is. Shoot. Well, I thought I had it here. Well, I thought I had it, but I guess I don't. I don't have the number.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Is there something the town might ever want to do, a little turnaround or something of that sort on? Is it, you said it might have some value to the town, is that one of the possibilities?
That is the intention.
So if you get down to the end of the street and want to get back out of there, this would provide a way to turn around and get back out without backing over everyone's lawn?
Right. It's not going to be paved, it'll be, but it'll be, it'll be like a, you know, asphalt, not a...
Gravel?
Gravel surface, thank you.
That possibility has been discussed with the, I think there's only one abutter, but it's been discussed with them. I mean, I hate to think that it would change their call.
I think they're aware of the proposal, we haven't received any indications, any objection to that.
They did not?
No. But I think actually they support it, because if the absence of that, the driveway is the only other place for people to turn around.
And it's properly signed anyway, that it's no outlet street.
Well, it is, but the occasional car still comes down.
Been in that business, Glenn, I know. People don't read signs.
Okay, further comments, questions?
The only other comment I have is that soil is going to be checked by the DPW, and it's found to be contain no contaminants or anything like that.
Yes, I mean, we didn't go out and spend money to actually have it soil test done, but the, there's no, we did explore a little bit the history of the site, and there's nothing that indicates that there's any kind of problem with this soil. Again, we're not doing anything. Basically, we're throwing a little bit of gravel down, and that's it. It was already an area that was kind of cleared, so we didn't even have to do a lot, there's not even a lot of tree removal or anything that has to be done.
Yeah, I would hope that if the town does something there, it will have more than just a little bit of gravel thrown down, that it will be done with some style, so...
Well, I didn't, okay, I didn't mean to say that it's going to be incoherent or anything, but that it would, it's not going to be...
Be a low maintenance effort, but it doesn't have to be just...
Right, right.
Okay. Further comments? Is there a motion?
Move to accept.
Is there a second? Move and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it is not explicit, but assume that you will check to make sure that there is no obvious liability to the town should we accept it.
Yes, that'd be part of the process that I do with the town council. And then the last item is a simple matter of the view, accepting an easement that we have requested and have been granted by the folks that built Tractor Supply. Their name when they submitted on their application was New England Retail, but I noticed for this purpose of this easement, they have established an LLC that's called the Field of Diamonds LLC, so that's the entity.
Which owns the...
Which, well, which, yeah, which owns the development, and which is granting us the easement. The easement has been reviewed by Vicki Hellman, I've looked at it, and it also has a plan that's been reviewed by Vicki as well, and there's a larger version of it if you want to look at it, but it's fairly simple action here, which is to, whenever we have a situation where we have public infrastructure on private property, we need to place a permanent easement on the property so that we have access to it, and that's what we're doing here.
Right, this has been discussed at some length with utilities, and I don't think there are any outstanding issues regarding it. Any questions from the Board of the Board? Is there a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
What I have for you is two, it's twice, that's the acceptance sheet indicating that you're...
Accepting the easement. That'll be part of the easement along with the plan that gets recorded at the registry, and then it'll be official.
Vote on retiree health insurance plan structure change. So while the board is signing that, town manager, would you...
Mr. Chairman, once again, I'm going to accuse myself, I think as you probably remember, I'm a retired employee, and I do participate in the health insurance program, but I do deserve my right to speak as a citizen.
And we look forward to that. Thank you very much. Mr. Sapitsky has accused himself and reserves his right as a citizen to speak. Okay, this came before the board once before, there was a concern on the part of myself and others on the Board of Selectmen that perhaps additional time was needed to permit retirees to meet with representatives of MIA to find out in more detail how it might affect them individually. The overall plan, which is being discussed, would bring retiree health insurance in line with current employee health insurance, as I understand it, and the net result would be some recapture of funds for both the town and retirees, and from the perspective of the Finance Committee, it would have a significant influence on the various formulas that are used to determine our OPEB liability. In fact, by adopting this, we would dramatically reduce the town's long-term liability. The details of that, I'm going to let the town manager share with us once again, and then we will take comments from the board and anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak.
This was brought to the board initially in early October, and staff was directed to have a public meeting for retirees to hear from our provider what this plan would mean to them as a group. There are two main parts to this. One is actually a reduction in operating costs, and the other part of it is a reduction in our OPEB liability. The annual deductible and premium payments for each retiree under this plan will be reduced by about $1,400 a year. There will be, for most of the retirees, there will be other savings based on the health insurance, the prescription drug benefit. There is a paragraph in my memo to you that sort of highlights the changes, there'll be a co-pay for generics now where there isn't when they buy it retail, but they can, for many retirees who are on specialized medication, they will be able to, they will not have to pay a 20% co-pay, but their maximum would be, they would have a maximum co-pay that would be far less than that. Attached to my memo also is the matrix that explains the changes. I think although the savings for the town as a group will be, would be, town and schools combined would be about $269,000 a year, and the retirees as a group will benefit from that $269,000 through the reduced deductible and premium payments. But I think a more longer-term consequence of adopting this would be a dramatic reduction in our OPEB liability. We contacted the actuary who said that this would reduce, adoption of this would reduce our OPEB liability from $36 million to $23 million, which is a substantial reduction in liability. I think something else to point out is that if we do, we also found out from MIA that although the retirees' health insurance has not been increasing as fast as the regular employees' health insurance, we are anticipating if we do not adopt this plan, that it will go up by 9%, the retirees' health insurance by 9% in the coming fiscal year. If the board adopts this tonight, the effective date will be February 1st, 2015. We would also follow up with a meeting where retirees could consult individually around their particular needs regarding, and their particular impacts regarding the, what the change would mean to them overall. Again, I recommend that the board vote to change the retiree health insurance plan effective February 1st, 2015, from the present Medex III plan to the Medex II plan with a prescription drug plan. My second recommendation was that the entire savings or a stated amount thereof be set aside annually in the OPEB retirement trust. That second recommendation is not, I think, is subject to further discussion with the board, the school committee, and the Finance Committee, but I think the first recommendation is the action that the board needs to take tonight, if you so choose.
Comments?
Just a quick question, Rod, on the graph that you have here, does... On the graph that you have here, does the rate on 1115 would be 32097? Is that gonna be the rate on 21?
Yes. Jen was at the meeting, she says yes.
Yes, would you come to a microphone and identify yourself?
Sure.
You have a choice of sitting down or standing up?
No, I'll sit down, thanks. My name is Connie Donovan, and I am one of the retirees of which you were speaking. I taught in the Town of Vifswich for 39 years, I've been retired for six years now, and I've had the insurance during my entire career as well as now that I'm retired. And I have concerns because as retirees get older, the chances of their needing additional medications is probably, you know, fairly common, okay? At present, my husband takes 12 different medications, I take nine different medications. And so when you start adding up the price of that per month, it's not a savings for us at all. And also, um, sorry, I do request a public meeting for the retirees. From what I understand, not everybody got notification about the meeting two Thursdays ago. I don't know what the attendance was, but I guess a number of people didn't know about it, and so couldn't come and, you know, discuss things at that time. I realize that this is going to be a savings for the town. I guess my concerns are that at the present time, the co-pay is low, very low, but as time goes on, it may increase, just like everything else seems to. And suddenly, having to buy 22 medications in a month may just be too much. And I don't believe that the majority of retirees don't have multiple medications at present. One other thing also that I wanted to bring up, and that is that in the past, through Blue Cross, we were given a physical benefit of $150 off of whatever gym plan or Weight Watchers, that kind of thing, and that was done away with. That's also something that seniors really need, they need to be able to exercise.
That's included under the new plan. It's not included under the existing plan.
Right. Well, it makes a difference. I'm joining, I'm joining a gym that's $60 a month, and so it becomes $720 for the year. And even taking $150 off of that is significant, so.
Yeah, is that what the benefit would be under the new plan?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be reinstated as part of this?
Yes.
Okay. So that's-
Um, I think, I think that's about it.
Yes, I have, I have a question for you, Robin, and that was that this plan is going to put us in line with the current employee insurance?
That is correct.
So is there a change, is going to be a change in the current-
No.
Employee?
What, the plan that's being proposed for the retirees is the exact same plan that all the active employees have.
How long have they had that?
Well, I've been here two years, and it's been the same plan, so I-
That's, it's not a new-
It's been here for a while.
Been around for a while.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Yes?
Hello, my name is Ellen Greneyer. I'm a resident of 35 Paradise Road, and I just wanted to piggyback on what Connie said. Ms. Crosby, you said that the insurance for current employees was the same as the retirees?
No, it is not.
The proposed.
The proposed. Right.
All right, but retirees will pay 50/50, right?
They do now. The only change will be in the prescription drug benefit.
I see, okay, thank you.
And to the, how about the employees of the town? What is the percentage spread for them?
It's the same as the retirees for, for the, for the, it's a 50% or whatever the HMOs, the HMOs are slightly different, but it's 50%.
They don't have a planned structure, so it depends on what people sign up for.
That's right. But in this case, the, the rate will go from, for the retirees, from $562 a month to $321 a month. Then there'll be the $150 reimbursement, and you won't have the $50 deductible. If you-
I think that's 12 medications, actually, 20 medications on one that, you know, much more.
The benefit for generic is very generous. It's a full coverage for generics at retail. Employees pay $10 a month. On the other hand, for people that take specialty medications, right now, they would have to pay 80% for medication that runs $3,000 a month. That's fairly substantial for those retirees. Based on this new plan, if they go to retail such as CVS, Rite Aid, Walgreens, they will have a maximum co-pay of $35. And if you mail order your drugs, which you will get, mail order is $20 for 90 days, or the actual amount, in some cases, the generics are less than that.
Right, so that's the savings of $10 per month for a prescription.
I can't speak to your prescriptions, but-
No, I'm talking, it's a, it's a misquote.
It goes from, it goes from $2 for three months of generics to $20 for three months of generics.
All right, it's, um, yeah, but a mail order costs, yeah, three months supplies, $20, a two-month supplies, $20, a one-month supplies, $10.
Correct.
I don't know whether it was, no, it wasn't a typo, because that's true with preferred names as well.
As I said, the expectation is, if this is adopted, MIAA will come in and meet with each individual retiree that asks to meet with them, and you will find out what the status of your medication is. They'll meet privately with you, of course, that's not public information, but I, you know, I'll share this, I get a generic medication and I pay $9 for three months, so it's really based on what your generic costs. So in some cases, you may pay less than that $20.
Other comments or questions from the audience? Do distinguished gentlemen are approaching the microphones? Would you- Who are you speaking about? Please identify yourself and tell us where you live.
Mitch Feldman, 14 Birch Lane.
Jamie Fay, Nine Fellows Road.
And what else do you do around town?
We're on the Finance Committee. So we wanted to speak in favor of this change. The calculations, the math is very compelling, obviously, in terms of reducing the unfunded liability of the town, and really highlights, you know, one of, the point of GASP-45, which is to highlight for the town the impact of reducing healthcare expenses over a long period of time. And in this particular case, the leverage that you get is that the majority of our retirees are over 65, and where you can reduce the premiums that the town is sharing by almost 50%, results in a reduction of nearly $13 million in the unfunded liability.
That's over a long period of time.
And it's over, and the leverage you get is because you're looking at horizons of 30 years, so when you can reduce expenses like that, you get this kind of big impact. And it's, it's the most powerful way that any town can go about reducing the unfunded liability and keeps, you know, so the accounting helps keep us focused on ways to really make impact on those costs over a long period of time.
I just thought I would address the second part of Robin's recommendation, which I think is very important. We made a promise to the retirees in 1996, I think, that we would provide them with health insurance, and you've heard the story before, but at the time, the cost was estimated, I think, about $60,000 a year. Finance Committee did not support that at the time. It was voted through by town meeting, and, you know, and I think in hindsight, it probably was the right thing to do for our retirees, but it's very clear, this is a very expensive benefit to provide, and it was not negotiated, as most benefits are in collective bargaining, where, you know, you're trading-
Let's back up and be clear, what benefit are you talking about that was passed?
Retiree health insurance.
Okay. Prior to that?
There was none. And so pretty much everybody who is retired today, when they started working for the town, they had no expectation of having health insurance when they retired. That will no longer be true, as sort of younger people make their way through the system who've been hired, but, so, that's just history, but, and I do think in hindsight, it probably was the right decision. But it has left us with enormous liability. We made a very, very large promise, but a promise without a financial plan is really not a promise. And I think we owe it to the retirees to take these savings that we're achieving and help to put that financial plan in place. I mean, it's gonna take more than just the $261,000 or whatever the number is, but it just seems to me that unless we really put together, like the Town of Dedham has, I mean, they've, they've done this, they've figured out how to pay for it, and pretty much taken the same approach, until we get to the point where we really have a plan that addresses this liability, it's gonna come up again, and again, and again. And I don't think that's fair to the retirees to sort of always have their benefit, you know, before town meeting for consideration or not. So I just feel very strongly that to the extent that we can achieve these savings, which I give great credit to Robin for doing, I think it's really fantastic that she's been able to come up with this, but we need to take those savings and start to put it towards that financial plan that backs up the promise that we made to our retirees to pay for the health insurance, so that's my pitch.
Okay, so you are one in favor of the recommendation, number one, that we adopt the plan?
Absolutely, yep.
And secondly, you are recommending that we give consideration to a use of some of those savings, should they materialize?
Actually, all of them, not just some of them.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Don't go away. We may have, we may have some follow-up questions, depending on what else goes on here. Okay. Comments? Yes? Please identify yourself and tell us where you live.
I will.
My name is Charles Spitsky. I live at 17 Upper River Road, and I would once again like to advise you that I am a retired public employee, and I do take advantage of the town's health insurance program. I have also been in touch with the Ethics Committee, and they have informed me, or their legal representatives have informed me, that I can speak as a citizen. I want you to know that I represent no one, and that the ideas that I have or the comments that I make are entirely my own. First of all, I would, and I certainly don't challenge the board's authority to change this benefit on their own, obviously, that's written in the law, and I appreciate that, and I certainly understand that. What I've disagreed with from day one is the process that's been used. I think that our employees, as Mr. Fay has pointed out, and I think even to this day, certainly during my 40 years of being involved in, in, working for the town and then serving the town as a selectman, is that we find that our employees have been very, very reasonable in the negotiations for these, for these benefits. 65/35 was only a recent development, it always was 50/50. I think the town and the employees understands the importance of the benefit moving forward. I think that statements such as "it's your decision, your decision alone," even though that may be true, does not send a good message to our employees. And I think that, you know, once again, if we want to have high morale in employees that we expect to give 110% every day, we should include them in the process. Over the past couple of weeks, I've done a lot of research, and I found one interesting program that they have in Newburyport, where they have a committee of an employee, of management, and a retiree who actually participate with the insurance companies in negotiating rates and negotiating plans. I think that's something that we might want to look to in the future. It's inclusive, everyone has buy-in to the program, and certainly, I think that buy-in helps everyone understand the necessity for change. I, as you, understand that this is a very expensive proposition, it's a great way to save money, and I have also checked with a number of communities, and I'm pleased to tell you that their reaction to the, to the, to the plan, to MedX-2 itself, is very, very good. They've had not a lot of complaints, and that's a good thing. So, you know, it's good for the employees, it's also, you know, obviously good for the town. So I don't want to, I don't want to downplay the, the plan. I think, I think the last time we were here, we had a lot of unknowns. I certainly appreciate the town manager and Human Resources putting together our meeting. I think it's unfortunate that the meeting came after the fact, once again, and I also think that it's important that it wasn't, that it wasn't driven by data. I think that certainly, MIAA could provide us with a number of prescriptions, you know, that are purchased through their program, what the cost was, and what the cost will be in the future. That's not violating anyone HIPAA's, you know, information or whatever, but, you know, we're making this decision, I think, on, you know, on one-sided, you know, anecdotal, you know, information, and I think probably in the future, once again, should change. I think that, too, that undoubtedly, there's gonna be added cost to the employee and/or the retired employee, and I think, you know, Mrs. Donovan pointed that out. I think probably the point was missed in a lot of the questions, and that is what's the co-pay. I think the town manager began by saying that it'll be the exact same plan as the current employees, except there's a different ratio between what a current employee pays and what the town pays in that regard. Obviously, current employees pays, pay 35%, the town pays 65% of that benefit. As part of my research, I looked at 10 towns, the 10 towns listed that are in the MedX-2 plan, and the vast majority of them paid more than 50%. You know, actually, of the 10, only Bauxford and West Newbury are at 50/50. Most are at 75 or 65/35. I wish I knew Saugus, if I went to work there, they pay 90/10, so that's phenomenal. And I think that, you know, and I think that is why-
There must be other downsides of working for Saugus.
One would think.
Maybe there are downsides, I'm not sure. But, you know, in any event, I think, too, that was the intent of the law that was changed to allow, you know, unilateral decisions on, on these sorts of issues. You know, it was changed to, you know, to sort of, you know- You know, it was changed to, you know, to sort of, you know, deal with those kinds of abuses that, you know, employees were not willing to talk about and, you know, really should be. I don't think we have that situation in Ipswich. So, you know, what I would ask is certainly, I mean, I think it's a good idea. You know, I think we've heard that. I think that we've got to listen to our employees and got to understand what the effect is. I think in the long run, you know, maybe we should look at changing, you know, the formula from 50-50 to 65-35. You know, my calculations is, is that it would cost us, of the $269,201 we'd save, it would cost us $40,380 and would still walk away with $228,821 in savings, which, you know, which is still significant and certainly, you know, could go a long way to reducing our liability. And the other side of the coin, I mean, I've talked to people that, you know, have called me and, you know, as Mrs. Donovan pointed out, I had one lady call me who's been a longtime retiree, has 13 prescriptions. And it's going to have an effect, you know, on, you know, their ability to pay. There's no question about that. When you're getting prescriptions for $2 and now you're paying, you know, $10 or $20, I guess, it does have an effect. So, you know, one of the ways to ameliate that effect would be, you know, certainly to consider changing the formula. But I think, you know, once again, of the 10 towns I spoke to, no one had any bad things to say. They haven't a lot of, you know, complaints from their employees. I don't know if the town manager has, you know, had conversations with other towns relative to that or not. But I'd be interested to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Barry Hopping, School Committee. I have to stop sitting behind Charlie because he always gets to speak first. But first, I want to just mention that the School Committee voted in support of this recommendation to change the retirees' healthcare plan. I want to thank Robin for continuing to find ways or to explore ways in which we can realize the savings through a variety of different means. And I also want to thank the Board of Selectmen for postponing the vote from three or four weeks ago so that retirees could be heard at a meeting that was held a few weeks ago My concern at that time, as it is this evening, was not so much with Part One, it was with Part Two. Robin and I have talked at length about this, that it's well documented, the schools have more pressing needs at this point. I think if the calculation is correct, the savings realized would result in approximately $146,000 on the school side from the school employees, the retirees. We have talked at length at the School Committee level about a variety of different ways that we could, we see better spending that savings. And we would urge, and with all due respect to Mr. Fay's recommendation, we would urge the selectmen to allow discretion on the part of the School Committee to determine how those funds to be spent. So that's why I'm here this evening. I know you're only taking actions on Part One, but I would certainly be very willing to appear before you again if further discussions focus on Part Two. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Chairman of the School Committee? Thank you very much. Other comments? A couple of things that occurred to me as we were listening to various presentations. Mr. Fay has spoken actually for several years and has been a leader in calling our attention to our ultimate OPEB liability, which no matter how much we were to set aside in the OPEB trust, it would be very difficult for the town ever to fully liquidate that long-term liability. This plan has, as was pointed out by the Chairman of the Finance Committee, by its adoption, shows the greatest influence on reducing that long-term liability. It is also important to point out, the town has never failed to pay its annual share of employee and retiree health benefits. We pay on a pay-as-you-go plan. And some time ago, we established an OPEB trust, which Mr. Fay and others would like to see large enough to liquidate the long-term liability. Some of us believe that what we have done is to create an assurance for at least two, two and a half, closing in on three years. Regardless of what happens in the rest of the revenue stream or the rest of the budget, those employee health benefits will be assured for that period of time. I think we can continue to build that trust fund so that if we want to stretch it out and say that we can meet the annual cost of retiree post-employee benefits for three years, four years, five years, that's not a bad thing to do. It's certainly responsible. Each year, we hear from the auditors. I'm currently Chairman of the Audit Committee. We are one of the few towns which has taken the step to create a trust fund in behalf of post-employee benefits. And while we haven't made a dent in the long-term liability, we have been prudent and I think we have been responsible in creating the trust and some investment in that trust with the savings, I think, is warranted. Whether we put every penny that is saved, and I always like to wait till I see the savings begin to materialize a bit before I speak with great authority about how to use them. Everything we have heard about this plan suggests that, in general, it will be a good plan for retirees. I haven't queried every town, but I have had a chance to speak with representatives from some of the communities that have this plan. And like Mr. Sipinski, I have not heard anyone say that this is the worst thing, stay away from it. We've had nothing but trouble. They all say, once we got into it, it was relatively vanilla and it was sort of invisible. It seems to be working well. I think the benefits long-term for the town are good. I believe that, and there always are exceptions in any plan, that in general, it will not be a particularly onerous plan for retirees at this time. Other comments from the Board of Selectmen? Is there a motion?
I need that the Board of Selectmen vote to change the retiring health insurance plan effective February 1st from the present MedX-3 plan to the MedX-2 plan with a prescription drug plan.
Is it seconded? It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? As always, I would hearken back to a couple of the comments that Mr. Sipinski made. There's always the question of the shared amount, currently 50-50. That's always up for discussion. Maybe that can change if it turns out that there are some significant individual issues that could be corrected by a slight refocusing of that formula. But in the meantime, I certainly support this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. The town manager called me earlier today and said that she was running a fever and needed to take a bet. She strode up here and we appreciate that and she's now leaving.
I'm trying to contain my germs. I told her--
Okay. We have a consent agenda, which includes, if you'll check the packet for tonight, lifetime shellfish permits and other items, which generally include winter parking permits, street blocking requests, provision to package store liquor licenses, et cetera. Is there a motion to accept the--
So moved.
Okay. I will second that.
Great.
We can get Mr. Sipinski back here. Get him back in good standing. It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Approved. Approval of the minutes of October 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, corrections? All those in favor?
I was not at that meeting, so I'm going to abstain.
You were missed.
I was?
Yeah.
In spirit.
There was enthusiasm or something that we were missing for that.
Stealing my lines again.
I don't have any of my own.
Okay. It has been moved. I think we voted that, I guess. We're squared away on the 20th. All right. October 29th, minutes, acceptance.
So moved.
Okay.
It's moved and seconded. Any further comments, corrections, alterations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Any old business to come before the meeting? New business that we haven't tended to?
Just if I can have a quick, couple minutes concerning the Audit Committee. We had met on--
Now, the Audit Committee, this is not the Town Audit--
Sorry. This is School Operational Audit Committee that was formed back in town meeting in May by citizens' query, citizens' petition. We've been meeting since beginning of June. We've had probably somewhere between 15 to 18 meetings since that time. We met on Thursday the 23rd and interviewed the two candidates that had put in an application for the audit. It was the Evergreen Group and then the Abrahams Group were the two applicants. They were the only two applicants. It wasn't a final applicant, it was the only two applicants. We met at the summary room at the high school. They both came in, made their presentations. They had an hour to make their presentations. They had an hour. They made their presentation about 20 minutes each and then a 40-minute question and answer period. We took all of that information. We met last Wednesday here at meeting room A. Everything's been on TV. We've had a lot of meetings on TV, fortunately not on high def. And we decided to award the audit to the Abraham Group. Again, there's some contract negotiation that's going on there and nothing hasn't been finalized, but until the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed, they look like they're going to be the group that's going to perform the audit. Overall, it was unanimous amongst the group that this was the correct group to do our audit. They came highly recommended by many of the towns and cities that we contacted for references. They have a very good knowledge of Massachusetts. They're actually a Massachusetts-based company. We're very happy with the selection. We feel that they're going to do a really good job. They really took the, all the information that we provided. And kudos to the school, Joanne Cuff and her group. The amount of data that we had requested of them to be provided to the applicants, that's on the website. They did yeoman's work over there, getting all that together for us. And it really, for me, sitting here today, I felt that Abraham Group went through that. Once everything is all set and signed, I think they're going to hit the ground running. And I think they're already, you know, have looked at that stuff in detail and have things ready to go, so.
The people representing them in interviews and the stages up to today will be the ones who actually do the work?
Yeah. It was, they had three of their members here, the President of the company and two others. And they will be working along with other members of their organization on this audit.
You will be getting the attention of the key members of the operation?
Yeah. And again, I made a specific phone call to one of the local towns, they're not that local, but a local town that had had Abraham Group come in and made their audit. And specifically, he mentioned one of the team members who was at our meeting and just said, top-notch, you know, you can't ask for a better person than the type of recommendations they made. This particular town implemented all but I think one of their recommendations.
And their base where again?
Long Meadow, as a matter of fact. Oh, the Abraham Group? Framingham.
Framingham?
Framingham or Franklin. One of those F towns.
Sure isn't that Pittsburgh?
I pause it is not Pittsburgh. It could be, actually, now that you mention it. Just to rule. But yeah, we're pretty excited about them.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you very much. My sense is that with both the feasibility study group that's been working on that and the Audit Committee group, that we have been very fortunate to have talented, committed people who have moved quickly to expedite those processes. And I think that we're getting excellent results for the town. Those of you who've heard me speak to this before, I think that measure of a town is what it does for its young people. And that's true whether you are a current parent, a one-time parent, or a never parent. I think that we have a responsibility to that next generation to give them the best possible start. So the good work of the Audit Committee, and I hope we will learn something that will be of value to the town. Not necessarily from the perspective of squeezing money out of the budget, but in terms of learning about things that can be done to enrich and enhance the experience for young people. And I certainly am looking forward to the results of the feasibility study with regard to the Winthrop School. When I was Chairman of the School Building Needs Committee back around 1970, one of the targets for additional review and updating was the Winthrop School. We didn't have any success then, so I'm eager to see what happens now. Anything else to come before the committee? Motion?
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Before we vote, thank you, Ipswich, for being with us tonight. We appreciate your continued indulgence with us. And we thank ICAM for the good work that they're doing and bringing our meetings and those of others to you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.